The only one that's formally open is, is the Board of Selectmen. All right, announcements. So this meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair. Oh, we need to do, yeah, roll call. Eric here.
Missy here.
Kell Pike here.
Don here.
All right, and Kim will be here soon. So a few announcements. This meeting is being reported by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested, we keep bringing this up, for anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. School Committee and Finance Committee are two big ones. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our webpage at KingstonMA.gov. Also check our website for any additional events or notices. So, the big appointment is our joint meeting, it's not really a joint meeting at this point, but meeting with the Kingston School Committee and the Finance Committee. We're going to be going over an initial budget expectation discussions. We'll have a discussion regarding possible override and the annual town meeting timeline. So, as everybody knows, we're early in the process, but last year was tight. We were able to get our budgets done with about $3,000 remaining in the budget. So we squeaked through without needing an override last year. There's lots of uncertainties coming up this year. Depending on what happens, we could very easily need another override this, this coming year. So that's something we're going to need to talk about. And if we do need an override this coming year, it might pass one year, but it's not going to pass multiple years in a row. So we're going to have to look at a potential strategy of putting in enough money that would last us a couple of years or more, which is what a lot of towns in this, in the state have done. Lots of municipalities have, have tried to do overrides this past year and a lot failed. Some passed, but like Duxbury failed, Norwell, I think, failed. There's quite a few. So, and, and to me, Duxbury failing was, was somewhat shocking. But anyways, we're really early on in, in the budget process. We don't know, there's so many things we don't know, like with the schools, you guys don't know what the federal and state aid looks like for, for anything, regional transportation, special ed. I mean, these things go up and down, kind of, were in flux. The town, you know, our revenues are sort of up in the air, depending on what happens, what doesn't happen. So I'm going to hand this over to Keith, if you want to, if you want to start us off.
Sure.
Is there a phone? I know the agenda doesn't say.
Yeah, not tonight, because we have a lot to do in a short period of time.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
And thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. So, what we try to do is get together a five-year financial forecast based on a number of assumptions. I'll try to highlight real quick for everybody as we work our way through. So new growth, as I think everybody's aware, over the last couple of years has really slowed because of the water moratorium. We expect that to start to pick back up now that the water moratorium has been lifted. I, I think everybody's heard of, of some of the potential development that may be going on at Kingston Collection. Nothing's been, nothing has been announced publicly, nor have they, has it, has it been shared, at least, from the official standpoint from, from the town. But, but we, when I say we, town staff, the assessing department, the finance department, and I have made a number of assumptions based on new growth over the next five years. So, for example, fiscal '28, we're estimating new growth of about a million dollars. Some of that, we expect to be through some, some new residential development, as well as some additional commercial development up at the, up at the mall. That new growth will stay at a million dollars for fiscal '29, drops to 860,000 in, in 2030, 500,000 in 2031. As we work our way, you know, out, we're less sure, so we're less conservative, so we're more conservative, frankly. But we've taken, taken into consideration some of the growth that we're aware of now. We're hopeful that there'll be some additional growth that comes forward. But right now, based on what we know, we have included that new growth. As far as state revenues go, state receipts go, we've estimated an increase on an annual basis of four and a half percent based on past, past revenues. So, again, conservative estimate, but, but four and a half percent is above what we, what we see across the board on an annual basis. Local receipts, we're estimating a 2.75% increase. The, the local receipts, also, I think it's important to, to let everybody know that it does not include any increases in any of the fees. Every, every couple of years, or every year, the department has to look at the revenues, receipts that are, and fees that they charge for the different services that their departments provide, to make sure that we are competitive with, with communities in the area. And if local fees can be adjusted, we often do that as part of the budget process. The largest, the largest local fee revenues that are collected in Kingston are ambulance fees, and Chief Douglas does a great job at working with the ambulance billing company to get a, a good sense of where we should be, and we are, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are on the, on the higher end of what we charge for, for what communities charge for ambulance fees. One of the things that Chief Douglas has mentioned is the legislature in their infinite wisdom is starting to poke around a little bit with the, the charges for ambulance, ambulance trips, and may want to try to regulate those and have fees charged across the state at the same rates. We aren't sure where that is at this point, but, but that's being discussed. Smaller amounts, transfers in and out of special revenue funds, again, there's no, there's not a lot of money that comes from those. There's, there's not any increases proposed, and they're, frankly, they're material. As far as expenditures go, what we, what we are proposing through this spreadsheet we've provided is an increase of 2% for fiscal '27 and '28 for wages, 3% for, for fiscals '29, '30, and '31. The town has six collective bargain agreements that expired June 30th of '26. I believe the school has at least one that expires. So those will have to be negotiated, but in this, in this assumption, we're saying a 3% overall wage adjustment. And then for operating expenses for the town, we're proposing overall a one and a half percent for the five years. There are some exceptions to that. Retirement costs, health insurance costs, property liability costs, things of that nature are, are estimated at a higher rate than a one and a half percent, again, based on past increases from year to year. In talking to the school department, what they provided to us was a 4%, a 2% increase for the local school department, a 4% increase for special ed, and vocational increase of 6%. So that's what we've done, that's what we've included in, in this forecast for each of the five years. So, not to, not to spoil the surprise, I guess, but I'll, I'll start with where everybody wants to end up, just so people know, know what we're dealing with when we work our way through this presentation. So based on, on the assumptions that I've outlined, there are some increases in, in departmental budgets. One of the things that I had asked all the departments for was if you're, if you see something, or if you're seeking something more than what's in the budget now, whether it be additional staffing, additional programs, things of that nature, please let me know. Tell me what, you know, what you expect for, for costs associated with that, and what fiscal years you're looking to bring those into the budget. We've incorporated those into this forecast as well, and taking all of those things into consideration. In fiscal '27, if all of our assumptions were correct, all the revenues and appropriations came in exactly what we thought would be, we would need a, we would need a proposition two and a half override of just under a million dollars. That drops in fiscal '28 to 209, I'm sorry, 289 or 9?
209.
209,000 dollars. And then for fiscals '30, '31, and 30, 30, I'm sorry, sorry, '29, '30, and '31, we are, we are suggesting that there's going to be excess tax levy that starts at 394,000 for fiscal '29, and will increase to 1.1 million in fiscal '31. So, I think, I know at, at the Board of Selectmen level, I'd like to think that they're, they've been aware that we certainly expect fiscal '27 challenging for, you know, the reasons we discussed earlier, you know, the, the water moratorium was really challenging on, on new growth. We saw very little new growth. You know, again, we were, we're proposing a million dollars of new growth in fiscal '27 and fiscal '26. We had new growth of 400,000. And I don't think, and we're usually conservative. So when I say that, we think there'll be, it'll be over a million dollars. We thought we were conservative at the 400,000 in fiscal '26. I think 400,000 is going to be, we're not going to be much over 400,000 in fiscal '26. So, as, as Eric mentioned, we started fiscal '26 when the budgets were approved of excess levy capacity of, I'm sorry, 1,775 dollars. So, we, we spent almost every penny we had. Fiscal '27 is going to be a challenge, certainly. And we're, you know, hopefully some of the assumptions we'll make will come to reality, and we'll be able to fi, we'll be able to fine tune these numbers as we work our way through the budgetary process. From my, you know, my thought was trying to get together tonight as a group was to try to have everybody understand and hear one message, have all three bodies that have a, play a live role in the budget process, to be able to get together and have a conversation. And I know this is a little bit of a subject that I, I just, I'd be, I'd be remiss not to say it. I think we, if, if there is going to be a discussion about an override, what I, what I think we learned as a board last year, when we were possibly going to have an override, was the earlier you can make that, make people aware that's going to be out there, the better off you are to educate people. So, having all of the different, different departments submit a budget as early as they can is going to be critical. I know it's challenging for the schools, I respect that. I'm not taking anything away from that. But if we, if, if, if the FinCom finalizes the budget in April, and they need an, and there's an override needed, I, I'd be concerned that they would be very successful. And, and so I'm just trying to be honest. There's, I, I, I can put up on the screen if people would like me to, there's a budget bylaw that has a timeline. It's, it's something that was amended a couple of years ago to push the deadlines back from December into January, and then further back into the years, you work your way through the process. If the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the school committee want to talk about modifying that budget timeline, you know, that, that's a topic that should be discussed. If nobody wants to modify the timeline, respectfully, the timeline should be met, in my simple, simple mind.
So, I, I just have a couple of things to say on it, and I'm going to say it.
Wait, were you on speaker?
I was. So I have a little bit, bit of experience. So one of the things, obviously, I mean, nobody knows more than me, the, the challenge, and you, obviously. You guys know the challenge you've had. I mean, getting these numbers from the state, you know, and, and the state doesn't get their numbers on time. You know, the, the governor's budget's supposed to be done, House One's supposed to be done, it's never done on time. So it makes life difficult for everybody. But if it's possible for, for you guys, I mean, we know contracts, so we know whether, whatever the percentage is on the contracts, and assuming you're not, you know, laying anybody off, you, you might know about some retirements, that sort of thing. And then just come up with assumptions. So basically, you know, we're assuming, I'm making these numbers up, 65% reimbursement on special ed, 65% on regional transportation. And again, I'm making them up, I mean, you guys have a better idea. But if, even if we had like somewhat of a better idea of the number based on all of those assumptions, and I know some of the grants, you, you won't, you won't know all of that either. But just as much information as possible with the exclaimed assumptions. Because one of the things that I've heard, I don't think from any of you guys here, but is that if the number's provided to the town early, the town's going to hold you guys to it. But, you know, we can't hold ourselves. I mean, our numbers were changing pretty late in the season, because things, things happen. And it's going to happen more with the schools than it does here in Town Hall, I think. So I think it would be fair to say, if you could come up with your best estimate earlier on, with certain assumptions on what the state aid is going to be, and then when it's not, we can adjust it. And if other things change, you know, you have other kids signing up for VOTAC or, or anything like that. I know a lot of the stuff changes later on in the season. Yeah, go ahead.
Eric, if I may.
Yeah.
I think one of our biggest challenges that the school department's going to face in this next year is the one-time funds, if you would. The state aid that we received for the shelter funds.
Yeah.
Is no longer for Kingston and for Silver Lake.
Right.
It's around 800,000. Like, if we can estimate right now, we, we're using E and D to complete our budget the last two years.
Right.
We're looking at about a $5 million, you know, hole that we're digging out of to start.
Right.
So just knowing that, and that's, that's regionally, that's not just Kingston, and that's not just Silver Lake. But if we already know that, then I think, in good faith, we can say, I think we need to have the honest conversation that in order to have a level service budget, we're going to be looking at no override this year. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at cuts and layoffs and things.
Mm-hmm.
And then even when you speak about the contractual obligations, the two or the 3% or whatnot proposed, you know, I mean, that, that very well could put us into another negative situation.
Right.
So we're, I think, we can be honest that we're coming from a really difficult.
Yeah.
Position, but I would be interested in making that amendment. I don't know if Keith was asking that it come from the school department, or the Board of Selectmen, or the Finance Committee to amend that bylaw, but it is something that it's, it's frustrating when we're saying we don't even have state numbers until January. We don't know E and D until February for the regional budget. We don't know Circuit Breaker until probably February or March, to try to give honest numbers, because they could change up until pretty much we're due for town meeting warrant. So.
So, I think if you all, oh, go ahead.
Can I just talk about that a little bit? Just to tail onto the last part, we don't even have our enrollment officially until October 1.
Right.
But one thing, I think it's important for everybody to note, that the numbers provided by Sarah for the forecast are not level service. All these numbers involve cuts cumulatively.
Okay.
Starting with next year.
Yeah.
And so on and so forth. So I think it's important, this is not a level service budget.
Right.
And we are also in contract negotiations this year with both teachers and support staff.
Okay.
Same with Silver Lake.
Mr. Chair. So, if I could. Part of the, I appreciate that, right? So, so part of the reason we wanted to have this get together and try to put together a financial forecast is to as accurately as we could identify if there's a deficit there, what that deficit is. So if, if, if the school department knows that a 2% budget increase is not realistic, or not something that's reasonable, and you're already starting to, you're, you're starting the year with a $5 million deficit, respectfully, I think that's, the information should be in that forecast. So the, the, these three boards can have conversations about what we're, you know, how we deal with that. Because as we sit here tonight, this, this presentation's worthless. Because if, if, if you're telling me I'm, I'm $5 million up before I even flip to the next slide, why are we sitting here? So it's.
Do we, is that 5 million a solid number, is that?
I don't believe that would include our, for Kingston, that wouldn't include Halifax and Plimpton. I believe that number that I just mentioned would include both of those towns as well. But for Kingston alone, I mean, we're looking at a loss of 800,000 in shelter funds.
Right.
We're.
But were you guys able to, not late, reduce some of the expenses that were associated with them?
Well, I actually, not necessarily. Matter of fact, I don't know how much you're aware, back in June, we, we had already approved the town meeting budget.
Yeah.
We had cut 460,000, most of which was absorbed through retirements.
Yeah.
And then we had a special education surplus, slight surplus, like 100,000. That was able to prevent us from having to make cuts after the budget was already passed, because the state opted to take back 300,000 that they had already told us we were going to get.
Yeah.
And then they took back 100,000. That was, these were supposed to be reimbursements. How do you reimburse somebody for something that they've already spent, then take it back and say that you're not getting it? So, as far as I'm concerned, we lost 400,000. That was promised to us for the district. And whether or not those children were still enrolled through the end of school year. whether or not those children were still enrolled through the end of school year, I'm not certain of that. But we, we lost, we lost a lot of money just to start June. We thought we were possibly making cuts in the middle of the month, and then it turned out we had nine retirements that we were able to make our budget work. So that, that happened even after we passed the town budget. So, I don't know.
As far as the difference in amount, I would defer to Sarah who put the forecast together, what that would look like.
I agree with the $800,000 for Kingston with the shell, the lack of shelter funds. Last year, Silver Lake used $1.3 million of E and D in order to fully fund the budget. So I'm not sure where the rest of the.
And in FY '24, it was $1.2 million.
So the 1.3, roughly 55% is Kingston allocated? Would that be?
58%, yeah.
58?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a general comment, if I could.
Absolutely.
I think it's important that we have some real numbers as early as possible. My fear, however, is that when we start throwing around numbers like a million dollars, $5 million, okay, we have to try to balance the issue of getting townspeople excited about something that may never happen, that we need to somehow be realistic when we're coming up with numbers. At the same time, I agree with Keith 100%. I agree with our school committee members. We want to get real numbers sooner than later. But I don't think that we should be making public statements where, you know, let's, let's say if we start with this $5 million number. I know the police are looking for significant dollars this coming year. I, I know that there'll be changes, okay? So we could get to the point where we would be at a mil, and I'm going to take a number out there of $10 million. Does anybody think that we're really going to go to the town of Kingston looking for a $10 million override? I firmly believe that we'll go, we'll very apt to have to go to the town for a 10, for a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, okay? But I don't want to get everybody excited at an unrealistic number. So that, I, I think we all need to do as much budget work as possible in a private mode where the, the school administration, the school principals, the, the school committees come up with numbers that they say, okay, this is the best we can do, and this is what we're willing to go to the towns for Proposition 2 and 1/2 override. I think that behooves us all to try, I, I, I get nervous when we're doing tons of detailed preliminary budget work in public, that I just don't think that that works very well. And it gets people excited about, oh my God, we're going to have 50 teachers cut back, when we probably all together realize that's not going to happen. But we get the public excited about it. We, we get to the point where we, as school administrators, as, you know, I've been involved heavily in town finances, school budgets for almost 12 years now. And I can tell you, we can work together to get to realistic numbers where the school committee, the school administration, the finance committee, the selectmen, the town administration, we all have that kind of gut feel, that understanding that yes, we're going to have to go for a 2 and 1/2 override. But it's this order of magnitude as opposed to this. Then we start getting the public excited, gets the public involved. And I dare say, in, in coming up with those numbers, we all need to consider, you know, if we go, I think the schools can sell a $2 million override overnight. I don't think they can sell an $8 million override overnight. So I think it just behooves us all to try to bring some realism into the picture. And I came to this meeting saying that I was going to be relatively quiet, but I just feel it's necessary that, you know, I want to support the schools. I want to support an override if that's what's absolutely needed. But I'm not going to support the schools. I'm not going to support an override that's in danger of bankrupting the town. I'm not going to support budgets for the schools that will have my public safety departments making cutbacks. End of story. Thank you.
Eric, can I just respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Pike, I wasn't trying to throw out a $5 million figure to deceit anyone. You know, I certainly wasn't just throwing that out there. But I do think it's realistic that when we're looking at this budget process, which I am going to ask the select board to consider the warrant article to amend the timeline so that it is practical to when the school gets realistic figures. Because otherwise, even if we look at our budget for the first time in December or January, we're not going to have realistic figures from the state to know what we're targeting, whether it's going to be a $2 million override or a half million dollar override or anything. We're not going to have those accurate figures. So I get that we're not trying to get anyone into an uproar. But realistically, when we first saw our first drafts of the budget in January last year, we were looking at massive cuts from both the regional budget as well as the Kingston budget. And it was because through the one-time funds or the use of E and D that we were able to stabilize our budget. Unfortunately, that comes back and bites us in the butt the year later because those, those revenue sources are not still there. So we get it, we're not trying to, I guess, get the public into an uproar. But I do agree with you that if it's a reasonable request for an override, we will probably have more, I don't want to say luck in passing, but more success in passing it if the town's aware of what we're asking for, as opposed to waiting until March and saying, oh, by the way, we need no override. So I agree with you. And I also say that one of the reasons that it's almost, I don't want to say it's pointless for us to sit at the table, is because we don't have the accurate figures at this point. And it, it does get us into a, you know, this is what we're, these are the conversations we're dealing with when we're in negotiations and we're, you know, trying to plan for next year, is what, what practically, what are we actually looking at?
And my whole point is trying to say that I would hope that if the first pass of the budget from the school administration going to the school committee comes up at, say, a 20% increase, I would hope that there's work done upon that with the idea that we're not going to the town for an override at the 20% level. That we're going to get that to a point where, pick a number, maybe we'll go to the town for a 10% override increase. But just trying to make the point that, you know, if we, if we start off with a number that is no way, shape, or form ever going to happen, I think we make more problems for ourselves.
Just a reminder, we always start off with a level service budget. And then, you know, so even, even if we're seeing that, say it's 20%, and I, I hope to God it's not anywhere near that, but say it's a high percentage, that's a level service budget. So everything after that conversation is talking about cuts. And it's a matter of where they're coming from.
And I know this is very preliminary, but if it was a level service budget with a 20% increase, you would fight for that for the schools at 20%?
I, I can't, I can't say that I would at this point. So I would hope to God it's not anywhere near that. But I just, I'm trying to think practically too. What would that mean in terms of cuts?
Derek has his hands up, but you were going to say something. Go ahead.
Yes. I just wanted everybody to know that Superintendent Prue and I met last, met in July to go over the budget timeline. And we changed the budget timeline for this year because I knew that timeliness of the budget process was going to be crucial to everything for all three towns. So the budgets went out to the, the budget entry documents went out to the principals in August, and their budgets are due to me on October 1st. I, I have been working with HR and getting the salary projections in. So I will have, Superintendent Prue and I will have a preliminary budget in October that then we'll be able to look at and work with the administrative team on. However, you need to keep in mind that, that the big pieces of the budget, the special ed, the technology and curriculum, the meetings for that go to the joint school committee in November. And so my goal was to deliver a voteable budget to the school committees in December, whereas in previous years, we brought a preliminary budget to the school committee and then spent three months working on the budget to get something for the towns.
Excellent. I think that's a great step forward.
Derek, you have your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. A real quick question, going back to the anticipated budget numbers that you provided. And I apologize, I'm going out of turn, but I've been screening and then I have to get back to. The full solid waste personnel services and total waste disposal costs from this year, $853,000 down to $515,000 a year, and this means something, we have $200,000 in costs for the next four years. Is that becoming an enterprise fund? Does that correct? Because if the amount correct, really has brought us to now.
Sure. So the, the information that we've included in the solid waste budget is based on the anticipation that there's a development out there that's going to help us reduce our solid waste costs. And based on that reduction, we took those, those reductions into consideration in the, in the out years of the, of the forecast.
That's, that's, that's super helpful. I looked at that and it's just a big, I didn't want to, I want to make sure that it's exactly what it is and not miss. So thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Marcia, go ahead.
I've got a couple of general questions. One is to follow up on Carl's point about the override. I don't think it's just the amount. I think it's also why. I think the why part is probably the most important part of sort of selling anything. I mean, you know, if you're a good salesman, you can sell ice to Eskimos. So the why becomes huge, in my judgment. And that goes back to my other question. I don't understand, and you don't have to explain it at this committee, this meeting, but I'm trying to understand why the loss of $800,000 in these shelter funds that the town received for fiscal year '26, and we're not going to get them for fiscal year '27.
Twenty-five.
Oh, we got them in '26.
Twenty-five to '26.
Okay. But so we got them, we got $800,000 in two separate years or over two years? I'm trying to wrap my brain around that.
That was in fiscal '25, right?
We actually received more than that. But towards the FY '25 budget was approximately $800,000.
And do you know the amount towards the FY '26?
Zero.
Zero?
The students are gone. They're, the students, the population's gone. But we still do have some of the staffing that we.
And so I understand, and the taxpayers can understand, is that you avoided having to seek an override attributable to the loss of that funding was kind of like a good news, bad news situation because of these retirements and other savings that you were able to extract from the budget? Is that?
If, if I'm not mistaken, we had a $110,000 surplus with our special education out of district line item. Was it out of district? That, that is budgeted, we budgeted for so many students. And then they have until, so it was vocational.
We budgeted for.
And they have until April 1st, which is obviously after the town meeting warrant is due to apply for those programs. So that was some of it. And then the rest was absorbed through retirement. So you have, right. So ideally, you hire at a lower step than what your retirement.
So you're starting out, you're saying FY?
'26.
Seven. I hate the fiscal year. Nobody thinks like that. But, so we're starting out budgeting for FY '27, really like with an $800,000 hole?
Correct. For Kingston.
For Kingston. I know. I directed my questions at you, not so much as the lovely ladies.
They actually serve on both, so they can.
Okay.
I, yeah, we're both on Silver Lake.
It just helps me understand to, to sort of like to Carl's point, you know, selling it, whatever the number might be. I hope it's, you know, is, you know, I know there's some suggestion that we should go for a bigger number so we have a cushion. That's a different sales job than just focusing. I don't know if I want to mix those messages this upcoming year for the, but, okay, well, that really helps. And the only other question I have, I understand you're wanting to go on the special town meeting warrant for this fall. But will, because, to change the timeline.
Do we need to?
The select board to.
Are you referring to the roof project?
No, no, I'm asking to change.
The timeline, the budget timeline.
The budgeting timeline. You would like to push that out.
You can't hear the audio online, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You wanted, I thought you wanted to push the budgeting timeline out set forth in the town bylaws.
I would, I would like to, I would like to ask.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
I can try to, I'm getting right.
Oh, it looks like room 200. Well, it's, what's funny is we can hear them, but they don't know we can hear them. So they're going to have a whole conversation.
Log on, log back in, get out of here.
Oh, good. Good.
Okay. Thanks, Liz. So Mr. Hickey, when he had sent out the meeting in regards to this message, or in regards to this meeting, he had sent out a message saying that we could always ask the board of selectmen to consider putting a warrant article on the town meeting fall warrant, fall town meeting warrant to amend the bylaw. And if I'm not mistaken, so I've been on the committee now for almost nine years. Eric previously served on the Kingston School Committee and Silver Lake for 15 years.
Sixteen.
This, this was, sorry, 16 years. This was news to all of us, starting around 2021, 2022, that, that the town of Kingston had adopted a bylaw with the budget timeline as it stands in the bylaws today. But I've been making it clear in the last couple of school committees, meetings that we've had, both in Kingston on Monday and Silver Lake this past Thursday, we're the only town in the district, that we're a tri-town district that has a bylaw like this. So Halifax and Plimpton are not up against these same budget timelines. And we have one, we have a shared administration. So it's not really fair to ask our administration to work on two separate timelines. And then the regional committee, because that's also part of Halifax and Plimpton, is not going to adhere to a timeline that only Kingston is asking. So, so if, if for practical reasons to, I don't want to say get the selectman off our back, but to not continually be up against a timeline that's not practical to us, maybe that, that needs to be the next practical step.
I support a change in the bylaw based upon just what I understand about how state, the state aid, I'm just using that as a big, huge bucket of money.
That is a big bucket.
That's typically made January. Right.
I mean, it comes out so late. It's, and your deadline is 115, and then there's a 215 deadline in the current bylaw. But my, my point is that, and I do agree, it should be extended. I think we have a little bit more runway with a May town meeting. But my only concern is this. That was adopted at the special town meeting just two years ago.
Right.
And Carl made a point before that the taxpayers maybe have a long memory and bringing stuff back. So again, that's another sales job that we might want to consider. But I'm concerned that it may not save you for FY '27, just in case it doesn't pass.
Right. Understood. Understood. But thank you.
Are you talking about the bylaw not passing? So the important thing to remember is if they don't meet it, we're not having the police chief come down.
Right. Unfortunately, we might have to disregard it again, but in order to be respectful of the process.
Nobody's been taken to jail yet for violating the bylaw.
We're moving forward.
Yeah. And I was on the committee when that bylaw went into place, and I was against it too.
How did you get in there? I'm sorry.
I don't know. I don't know. I've been to every town meeting for the last several years. I have no idea how that slipped by.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't ask.
We could go down that rabbit hole, but it really is a rabbit hole.
Not a clue.
But you know what? I just want to give people one other big piece of information. So, so doing this and having these three committees meet is relatively new. What we used to do is we had a budget advisory committee, and it was the chair of the Kingston School Committee. I think, I think it was chair of the Finance Committee, Superintendent, someone from the Board of Selectmen, and they met, and the town administrator and finance director, and maybe the treasurer. And you, we would talk about overall goals and what, where we thought the town was. And okay, are we looking at a level service or level budget or what, whatever? You know, and then we'd come up with this guideline. Everyone's going to hit 4%, which, and then those. which, and then those were the years that schools would hit twelve, you know, and then they're like, well, you didn't follow our guidance. I'm like, we couldn't, because something happened, special ed went up, regional transportation went down, whatever. Um, so it's always been tough. So I think the way we're doing it now is good, especially this year, because it's, it's gonna be so challenging. Um, last year was challenging, this, this year it could be worse, but there's other things cooking in the fire as well that, that can change, you know, revenue and, and, and whatnot. But we still have to, it's almost like we're gonna have to come up with, with two versions of budgets, one that is whatever you, you all decide at, at, you know, a level budget, um, whatever, but then also one that, um, you can use if an override fails. So we're gonna have to have two versions of those budgets, um, because our town meeting is so, um, uh, late in the year, if we, if we go to an override, then it has to go to the election. Um, so we're gonna have to be ready for that. And it's gonna be a big sales job. I mean, I remember, I mean, you were involved in this, the last override, weren't you?
I was, I was not.
You were not, okay. Um, who the heck was it?
Her mom.
Yeah, and I, I remember-
She was PTO.
That was a huge effort, there were T-shirts, I think I still have our T-shirt, you know, yes, for Kingston Schools and whatnot. Um, we've had a few overrides over the years, um, some, I, I, I feel like the schools always passed, Public Safety, I think did as well, but like local government, we had one for seventy grand for the town hall, and that one did not pass. Um, that was a year-
Do you recall how much that override was in twenty-four?
I cannot remember.
Three hundred thousand, I think.
I don't remember.
No, I think it was three hundred.
We talked about that before, but, but this is-
But was that specific to schools, or was there also police and fire on that?
It was for our music.
There was one year where we had the schools and police and fire, and then the town hall, and we had them separated on the ballot. What's that?
I think that was the previous one.
Yeah, could be.
Or at least the schools amount was.
And I've been around for twenty-something years, yeah.
DLS has an override tracker that goes all the way back to the beginning of overrides in nineteen ninety, and you can sort through by town, by whether it passes, it's a, it's an excellent spreadsheet of which I love.
Yeah, and how much it was and for what purpose.
Yep.
It might not say what specifically within schools.
And something to track, I mean, not, not that I wanna suggest anybody that had a failed override this year to try again, but something that is interesting to track is like Hanover, they did not pass their override last year. They're doing such damage control this year, I mean, they pretty much obliterated their school budget. So they did pass it second time around. Duxbury, I believe they had a loss of twenty-nine teachers, um, for FY twenty-five. So I don't know, like, what they might try for next year, but-
I know, um, I know, we, the Duxbury one put in three different budgets. They did the level service, the prop, and then what would happen if it didn't-
Right.
Right, and I was going to say, instead of two, it would have to be three, because we'd have to have the level service that I believe, that, that's the one that I'm saying, I hope that number isn't crazy, and then we'd have to have the realistic one that the town is asking about, and then we'd have to have, um, the, what if the override passes. And then Women Hanson also just had a recently failed override for one point seven million, and their entire sports programs are about to be cut.
So I think getting back to the, to the special town meeting, the warrant, when do we, what, what's the timeline on getting something on the warrant?
The warrant closes, the warrant closes next Wednesday.
Yeah.
And if there was a need to reopen, the board can certainly do that. Um, but right now, the warrant closes Wednesday.
So I guess if we're going to amend the bylaw, my question would be, what is a better timeline? So the timeline we had before was never met, we could never get to it, it was way too early, everybody said this doesn't work, we kept having trouble producing a, I'm not saying everyone, I'm saying as a whole, we had trouble meeting the deadline. So we pushed, we changed the bylaw to push it forward, and we moved town meeting forward, and we moved everything out of April into May, um, but maybe that wasn't enough. So it, I don't know what the right date is.
You know, I, I would say let's ignore it for fall town meeting, if the Selectboard wants, see what happens with this amended timeline that Sarah and Dr. Prove provided, and then see what happens next year, um, because you could always put it on a spring town meeting warrant-
Right.
-to amend for FY twenty-seven.
I agree, that's the practical approach.
Yep.
Thanks.
One less article to read at town meeting.
There you go.
Okay. All right, Keith, anything else? And just to let everybody know, I think everybody does know, but Keith will be leaving us next week, next Tuesday, is his last day.
He looks super up there.
Nope, 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 public comment, sit down.
So we appreciate, we appreciate all the work you've done, Keith, working with the department heads on getting this put together.
So, I, I thank you. Um, you know, we, we put a PowerPoint presentation together, I'm happy to get that to everybody, we've given you the forecast. Um, I think there's obviously some big, big holes that, in the forecast now, that, so I frankly don't know how much time I wanna spend, um, you know, going through information that is not as relevant as I'd hoped it would be. Um, but just, I guess, in general, yeah, I think, and I think, my, my, Mr. Pike, one of the board members mentioned, you know, there are some, you know, the, the Police Department continues to try to get, uh, to a staffing level that is, that meets a community of this size. Um, and you'll see in, in the documents that we gave you, if you had a chance to look at them, that there are some requests for, uh, additional officers and supporting, supporting, um, supplies, if that's the right term, that, um, that these police officers would need. Um, so make you aware of that as well. Um, but I, I just, again, I guess my last comment would be that I think it's important for all the, the three of you, the three boards to understand what's happening and have that line of communication be maybe a little better than it has been in the past about what the challenges are, and, and I think it's great that Sarah and, and Jill have tried to come up with a, an earlier timeline, I think that'll make a huge difference, and very much appreciate that, uh, because it will make, I, I think it will help sell, to Marcia's point, um, people about why an override is needed, and what, what the benefit that, that's gonna be. So with that, I'll stop talking, and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, and, and, you know, we can update this. This, to me, is a living document that we can update, um, whenever it's needed, and, and these types of conversations, I think, would be great moving forward.
All of these documents-
Without public comment.
-are gonna be available on, with, with the supporting documentation from the night meeting, right? So if someone's asking for the documents, it's available.
Well, so they are, they are online now, but I'll get them online, um, it may be is, it may be, it may be early next week, because my left and right hand is on vacation, and, um, I've been swimming against the tide for a couple of weeks. So, uh, I apologize for that, but I, I'll get this information out there, including the, the PowerPoint presentation, and, and get it up on, on the website, we usually have a budget section, we'll start that early this year, we'll get it out there so people can see what, what's going on, and if, again, I'm not trying to, if, it sounds like the school numbers could be updated to some degree based on the eight hundred thousand dollar deficit you talked about potentially, uh, 'cause I, I recognize that was a one-time revenue that you just, that the School Department helped balance their budget last year, and frankly, if they came down the road, right? Um, so to Carl's point, I think it's gonna be important for people to see what, what the numbers are as accurate, accurately as we possibly can be, and right now, they're, frankly, they're underestimated.
But we can update that document as we get updated numbers. So as the forecast changes, as we get more information, we can take down the old one and put up a new one, and have it as updated, so that people can stay up to date with where we are-
No question.
-as far as we know.
No question.
I also think as we go through the process, it'll, it'll be important for the townspeople to realize, I know that a couple of years ago, um, there was a lot of confusion surrounding money that had been returned to the town, that was not necessarily returned to the School Department, that was being used towards the school budget, and our increases are based off not having that revenue source, or including that revenue source. If we can just make sure that we're apples to apples when we're comparing the numbers, that, um, you know, our revenue sources that come in for the school, what the revenue sources were, where, where they went, or which part of the budget they're a part of, so that we can compare, you know, if we're looking at a twenty percent increase, how much of that is our funds that went directly to the town? Like, to be able to pinpoint exactly where our revenue sources go, and then our deficit.
Well, the funds, I mean, so, and again, I don't, I'm not getting, trying to get too, too accounting-like on you, but the funds, you know, the, any unexpendable budget amount from all the town departments, including the School Department, closes into free cash. And we use free cash in Kingston, um, to a large degree to fund a lot of the capital things across town.
Including equipment, like plowing the sidewalks at schools or across the town?
Sure. Um, and it was two or three years ago, and I recall, and I don't know specifically what the, what the issue was, but I believe what we, what the Board of Selectmen agreed to do was use free cash as a one-time revenue to help the school balance their budget. I'm not, I don't, I don't recall the specifics, but I, I, I think it's important, I guess, at least in my simple mind, it's, it's, we weren't using town money to balance the school budget, we were using, that the school, the local school budget is a town department, whose, whose unexpendable monies go into free cash, and, and that free cash, as I mentioned, can be used for a variety of sources. Um, but I, and, and it's easy to, it's easy to second guess, man, oh, it's, it's, any, any, any accounting professor's gonna tell you, don't use a one-time revenue to balance a budget. And I know we've tried not to do that. And I, and again, I'm not being critical of what the School Department did, I get it, right?
Well, it happens every year, because we-
But at some point, so I would think at some point, that, just like this, the, this year potentially, there's no more mad, there's no more silver bullet one-time revenue that I can pull from anymore. So, um, I think we've gotta try to chew up that budget as best we can, and, and not, it, it's hard to use, not use those one-time revenues to help get, get things squared away, 'cause it doesn't impact things, but sometimes we come back to get you.
I completely agree with you, and one of the things I'd actually just asked Dr. Clifford the other night, this is our Assistant Superintendent, was about where we are at in terms of grants. Like, are we anticipating similar, um, revenues from grants this year? Because that also, those are also considered one-time funds, those are always used to balance our budget, because that's just how this Education Department works, so.
Can I ask, I know it's probably way too early, 'cause I don't remember the timeline, but what does Silver Lake's E and D look like for next year? I mean, is it wiped out again?
Now until February.
Yeah, okay.
So I want to preface my answer by saying that everything is give and take in the business office, and in order to push the budget up, something else has to be set aside so I can focus on the budget. So, um, and then I'm going to be losing my accountant for a long-term leave in a, in about a month.
Yeah.
So we are hoping to have-
But like, are the revenues still there?
We are hoping to have E and D submitted before she goes out on leave. That's a very aggressive, uh, wish on our part, because we were submitting it in February.
Right, okay, got it.
Previously.
Got it.
Just go back to something, um, Jeannie, when you, you and Carl were talking about the twenty percent, this made, made up number of twenty percent, I also wanna make sure we're all talking about the same thing, because I think last year, there, there was definitely some confusion about that, where that percentage increase number comes from. So when we're talking about percentage increase, are we talking about percentage increase on the budget? Are we talking about percentage increase on the taxpayer after the revenues come in? So I think it's really important that when we talk through the budget process, that we're using the same terms, and we're looking at it the same way, or else we're, we're really not looking at the same thing.
We're not comparing apples to apples.
Not at all.
That's, that's my concern.
That came, that became clear to me last year, and I was like, okay, we're not looking at this the same way, because we're not looking at the same thing. So when we look at the budget, we're only looking at, like, how many people do we have?
Right.
How much does that cost? What are the supplies? And the percent increase is four percent.
Right.
And then Keith and the town accountant apply, all, our Finance Director, apply all of the, the revenue sources and whatnot, and then we figure out, does that fit in under the levy limit? So when we're talking percent increase, we're talking about percent increase cost, not necessarily cost to taxpayer.
Not expenses, right.
So I think that was a, that was a little bit of a different way of looking at it, and I think, I just wanna make sure we are all on the same page, that we look at it the same way, so that we don't speak different languages.
That makes sense. Does it, any of the Board of Selectmen have any questions?
Uh-uh.
No, no. Did you guys have anything else? Is Don still on?
I guess, somewhere.
Yeah. Don, if you're on, if you have any questions?
Nope, just, uh, absorbing everything.
Okay.
My final comment would be, I think it's important to have these formal types of discussions, but I also think that there's times when informal discussions can help move the process along, can maybe answer a question, maybe, um, somebody from the school committee has a, a general question that wants to ask, I don't know, Chairman of the Finance Committee, or somebody on the Board of Selectmen who might have a little bit of financial management experience. Um, I, I know that there, there were times when, um, I, I would get a call from the school administration and say, okay, Carl, I know we just sat through a meeting where you said that you'd like to see a three, three and a half percent bottom line increase. Now what can the town really afford? And you kinda have those informal discussions, and, you know, you, you get to a somewhat of an understanding. I know that when Charlie Seelig used to run, um, Halifax, and the Halifax Financial People, there were a lot of those types of discussions that went on informally between the school committees, the members of various organizations, and, and I think you can do a certain amount of this without being in any kind of, um, open meeting violation law, et, et cetera. I, I just, you know, would like to throw it out there a, as a, another resource to, you know, try to understand some numbers before people get overly excited about, you know, where we're headed.
Thank you for offering your resources, Mr. Pike, because I'll take advantage of that. I've had several of those conversations over the last several years. I think that that also helps me understand it from the finance committee's perspective of where they're coming from, um, and also the Board of Selectmen, so I'm always open to having those conversations, and I do think that they're very important, especially as we get towards the selling piece of the budget, um, to make sure that we're all on the same page, because as I've said in a million meetings, if we can't explain our budget, then we have no business asking for it, so.
And it's just one member of the Finance Committee, I welcome those kinds of informal, it just builds trust and confidence. It's like a, it's a leap of faith for all of us, trusting that the professionals that we hire are exercising their very best judgment, and it's like somebody said to me, when you do a good job, nobody cares, but when you really screw up, everybody pays attention. And so I get how you feel, like, oh my God, you know, I don't wanna screw this up, but I wanna work in building relationships so that we can just know you're all doing your very best. And some days, it just doesn't work out for you.
Thank you.
I think that would be great, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
All right, so, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chiara, are you ready to take a motion for adjournment?
Before we do that-
He's ready.
What is our next step? So we really just have this one meeting? Should we be scheduling another meeting, or is this really?
Good news is it won't be on curriculum night, 'cause they only do that once.
So I, you know, I think, um, we need to get a better handle on some of the revenues, um, obviously on, on your process as you guys are going through your budget process. Um, so I'm thinking we could probably hold off for a couple of months?
Well, the revenues, I think, are, are tougher, because-
I know.
Um, you know, we just don't, the town's the same way, we estimate our revenues, and they fluctuate more than the schools, I don't know that, but-
Revenues are difficult, I'll agree a hundred percent. However, in fact, I'll, I'll do it tomorrow, this week. If we, if we look at a number like the state aid to education, from the, say, the governor's budget, or maybe the, the next budget on to the final, I think you'll find that there's not significant differences, year to year. Yes, you can have fairly significant differences, but when you get the first couple of passes on the state budget, from there until the end, you know, I, I, I talked to Duxbury the other day, Duxbury tells their school people, hey, we need your estimates by such and such a date, and the school people are willing to say, hey, that's the number, and go with it. So I, so I think, sometimes I think we overreact to how much these numbers really change, And I'll say the same thing for the town. I, I think that if you look at our major revenues, like the state, state aid, look at the ambulance fees, and look at the excise taxes for your automobiles. There aren't, you know, we're talking, for the town of Kingston, including education, we're talking approximately $60 million, okay? If I'm plus or minus 5%, I'm only talking $3 million. We're, we're not talking big dollars. Maybe that's too much from a businessman who's used to working with budgets, that if you're plus or minus 5% on a budget, you've done one hell of a good job.
So I, I think just to maybe follow up, you know, if the School Department's gonna get, get some of their preliminary budgets from their principals and, and schools earlier, I think the appropriation side is probably more important than the, than the revenue side, really, because. So it may.
So the costs, essentially.
Yeah, so you may, you may start there, right? Jill, did you have something?
So just for clarification, because I, this, this comparison comes up quite often, in comparing Silver Lake Regional School District, which is a partially regionalized school district, not a fully regionalized school district, with the town of Duxbury, that has a much earlier town meeting, and their school committee is required to have a vote much earlier. They also have a population that leaves town early for vacation, which is why their budget is earlier. So if you go to all of the other communities around the state of Massachusetts, the majority of these schools are not voting their budgets as early as Duxbury. So again, I, I just want to point out that difference, because I don't want to let the taxpayers think that somehow we're behind.
Good point.
No, it's fair.
Thank you.
And also, Eric, I did ask Dr. Prue the other night, I thought it was really helpful, last year in late January, we met kind of as a tri-town, but in a formal setting, with all three school committees, Finance Committees, and Board of Selectmen. I thought that that was very beneficial, to kind of see the state of where everyone was at. And I've asked if we can maybe try to include that during this budget season, so that we can all.
All right. If there's nothing else, Carl, do you like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen meeting be adjourned at 25 minutes of seven.
Second.
All right, all those, we'll do roll call, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
I'm aye. Missy, aye?
Don, aye. Oh, there it is.
Cal Pike, aye.
Oh, that's a little spooky. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you so much for making time for this, it was super helpful. Yeah, and thank you for all your hard work.